...to reconvene into a possession. Mr. Lomeno, seconded by Mrs. Memolito, all in favor? Four zero. Please rise for the pledge.
...the United States of America and to republiq what is stands. My nation, under God, neither this law, nor liberty, and justice for all.
We see that we have Assemblyman Mr. Steve Stern in the audience. And Ken, do you want to take it over? We appreciate his attendance.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. We are always pleased to begin fourth meetings with recognizing some very special members of our student population. And tonight, I see we have some friends from Harley Avenue who are here to join us. So to assist in recognizing them, I'd like to call upon our Harley principal, Mrs. Milan, and Assemblyman Stern. You know, I always follow the principles.
Good evening, Board of Education and the Elwood community. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to recognize five of our Harley's second graders. Last school year continuing through this school year, we took on math fluency as a strong focus at Harley Avenue, realizing the importance of students learning their math facts and knowing them with automaticity. Each month, students are given a math fluency assessment to check their knowledge and speed in math facts and fluency. I would like to call our five second graders being recognized tonight to come join me. Alejandro Canela from Mrs. Camerata's class. Arbob Malhi from Mrs. Murcot's class. Devin Jenke from Mrs. Shapiro's class. Dylan Dimitri from Mrs. Shapiro's class. And Dylan Julia from Mrs. Cheyenne's class. Each of these boys scored 100% on all of their math fluencies given this school year. In addition, they were given a fluency challenge with mixed addition and subtraction facts, and they all scored 100% and answered all questions in less than 60 seconds, which is more than 30 seconds less than the time they were given in their classrooms on their regular fluency assessments. We are all very proud of their hard work and practice with their math facts, and I know we will continue to see great things from these boys. Congratulations Alejandro, Arbob, Devin, Dylan, and Dylan, and all of your families. Keep up the great work. I cannot wait to see your continued success.
Valerie's completely up to you.
What do you think, Fine, that way?
Assemblyman, do you want to come on this side?
Sure.
All right, guys, so hold up your pictures.
Before we take the picture, I just wanted to say good evening, everyone. I'm here in New York State Assemblyman Steve Stern, and I wanted to come by to say congratulations. As, by the way, as you follow the news on the goings on in Albany and trying to make sense of a $178 billion budget, we can use some math fluency. But I did want to come by to say congratulations to our outstanding young people. We know they bring tremendous pride to their families, to their school district, and our entire community. Congratulations, and we wish you every success in the future.
Can you get that, guys? Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect. Congratulations.
There's one other portion of the meeting that I would love our Harley friends to stay for, and then we'll probably ask them if they want to go home and work on their math facts. But before they depart, perhaps they would like to hear our monthly report for the student liaison to the Board of Education, Mr. Siddiqui, if you would join us.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here once again, sharing all the wonderful news from John Glenn. The Nobel Knight title was passed down from Ms. Farrell to Mr. Lafferty, our dedicated and well-deserving science teacher. At Glenn, the staff is working hard to continue preparing students for the future, both near and far. The scheduling process for next year is underway. Counselors have begun meeting with students and parents to discuss course selection for next year. Huge congratulations to the John Glenn Nightline coached by Ms. Pilager for their performance at their competition at Massaw Community College. The team received fourth place for their kick performance and fourth place for their punt performance. Congratulations to Emily Lomeno for placing second place in the Invitational 3000 meters. She's currently ranked number three in Suffolk County. Well done. Kerry G. Verna placed first in second flight with her season's best time at the 2020 standard games. Congratulations are also in order for our January Students of the Month. These students are always looking to help others and are recognized by their peers for doing so. From 12th grade Samara Schiffer, who's here, from 11th grade Andrew Nguyen, from 10th grade Adia Ravman, and lastly, from 9th grade Jake Lada. Congrats, guys. On December 19th, students from Harley and Boyd journeyed to John Glenn to tour the building and view all the different decorated doors for the door decorating contest. Holidays from around the world were welcome, and fun was had by all. High school students in orchestra, jazz band, and acapella sang and played festive tunes. The social studies department won the door decorating contest for the second year in a row. On December 20th, the annual senior volleyball tournament was held. Seniors took periods four through nine off to participate, and everyone had lots of fun. On January 10th, John Glenn hosted the Mr. Glenn Talent Show. The boys competed in various categories, including swim and formal. In addition, there was a talent portion of the competition. At the end of the night, Eddie Donnelly was crowned Mr. Glenn 20th. Regents and midterms were held in high school from January 21st through January 24th, with the second quarter also ending on the 24th. Thank you so much for your time and attention, and I will be back again to report next week.
Thank you, Zane. And before we say good evenings to all Harley friends, I would like to thank Mrs. Scotto for being with us tonight, who I know has a big hand in the fluency of the math program at Harley Avenue. Thank you, Mrs. Scotto for being with us. That said, parents, you know, we're approaching Netflix hour, so if you would like to take your children home to continue exploring their math facts.
Oh, very, very.
Oh, yes, that's... I'm sure our Harley friends are very interested in that. We thank you for joining us, and always keep up the great work.
Dr. Bass, it's back to you.
For the super chemistry report, I'll be somewhat brief tonight, but there are some wonderful things happening that I wanted to draw their attention to. Each year, the Elwood School District has the opportunity to partner with our friends at Scope, the Suffolk County Organization for Promotion of Education that works across Long Island to support educational initiatives. Each year, they have an awards banquet that's attended by usually close to 1,000 individuals from districts across the island to celebrate shining stars within the organization. Each year, we have the opportunity to nominate members of our school community to be recognized by Scope for their service to this school district and this community. This year, we nominated four individuals who were all selected by Scope to be honored in the March Dinner that we hope the Board is able to attend, and we know many members of our administration and faculty will be there as well. So for service to teaching, interestingly, Ms. Lisa Gorman, who was our ELL teacher here at the middle school, was selected, and her announcement of retirement is actually on the agenda this evening for the Board to accept. So we congratulate Lisa for service to teaching. For service as a staff member, Donna Scadari, who we know is our purchasing agent in the business office, was selected. For service to our community, Ms. Donna Kelly, who is long-serving as we set to present and has done countless hours of work in support of our special education students, was selected. And for service to administration, Ms. Diane Wilkinson was selected for recognition by Scope for her many years and decades of advocacy efforts and service, too. It was at least since 1960, what? In all sincerity, Diane, congratulations to you. We know that your resignation for the purpose of retirement has already been accepted by the Board, and this is another occasion that we will have to celebrate your contributions to the district. So congratulations to you, congratulations to our three other honorees we report celebrating with you. Earlier this month, a letter went home informing our community that we'd be making a personnel change to our administrative team, where our two elementary principals would be changing places. And Ms. Milan, who was deported for the night, will be taking over as our Boyd principal, and Dr. Toscano will start her position at Harley Avenue on July 1st. And as I indicated in the letter, I want to assure the board that we will use the next several months to make sure this is a smooth transition, that there will be consistent communication and collaboration between the principals to make sure that when they do take on their new assignments, it's done so seamlessly for the overall benefit to our students. We look forward to the verbal alignment that this change will help us to make, as both of our principals clearly have intimate familiarity with where our students are and where they need to go. And I admire their instructional leadership and taking on these challenges that will bring great benefits to our students. I thank the members of the Board that were able to attend the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association Annual Meeting last night. I think the three Board members that were able to attend got to hear a good deal of some of what's going on in Albany, as it's something that Stern referred to, and some perspectives on the changing demographics of Long Island, and some of the intricacies to the governor's budget proposal. Several members of the Board will also be attending Legislative Breakfast that will be hosted in the Longwood School District on Saturday morning to hear more of that information and have the opportunity to interact with our elected officials and advocate for our school district. So I appreciate the Board's continued efforts to advocate for our students, and I'd like to acknowledge to the community the extensive amount of time that our Board dedicates to that function. Two nights out this week plus a Saturday morning, in addition to all the preparation work that goes with it, all for a very large compensation package. Tonight, we will be hearing a presentation on the John Glenn High School Course Guide update. I want to express regrets from both Mrs. Fine, our Director of Humanities, and Dr. Hall, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, who clearly had a large hand in planning the presentation and putting the materials together, were unable to join us tonight for very valid and personal reasons, but I would like to express our regrets to the Board on that basis. That said, I conclude my report.
We are up to the residents' remarks. The Board encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves in any organization that they represent at the meeting. Comments related to district business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible, may not exceed three minutes. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Help discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others of which the reputations, privacy, or right to due process can somewhat be violated is prohibited. Are there any resident remarks? Seeing none, we'll move on with our presentations.
The first presentation tonight will be made by our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Mary Dunkle, who will take the Board and community through what we should expect in the upcoming weeks and months as we fully engage in the budget planning process for the 2021 school year. I understand Ms. Dunkle has included a song and dance routine into a presentation this evening and has been rehearsing throughout the day.
Thank you for that pride offer, but I decline. Good evening, everyone. Good evening to the community. Welcome to the 2021 budget season. I look forward to another collaborative budget season this year, both with the Board of Education, the administrative team, and the community's input. Tonight, we're just a brief overview of the timeline and the different components of the budget. First, the budget calendar. This is just a list of the dates for the upcoming presentations that we have from now through the budget hearing of May 11th and leading to the budget vote on May 19th. Component budget. The budget is made up of three major components: administrative, capital, and program. We work with this each year just to make sure that the community is aware of what goes into the budget, the different categories that make up the expenses and revenue that are within the budget, so they understand. Now, we have administrative capital and program. Budget cost drivers, which are some of the main costs we have: salaries and benefits of our employees, our BOCs' costs, special education, transportation. Administrative component is essentially made up of all district office expenses and school board operations. That includes legal services, salaries and benefits of all administrative staff, and anything really having to do with central office. Capital component has to do with the operation of the plant, buildings and grounds, also the salaries and benefits related to such, any debt service we had, which is related to the bond and the EDC that we've now recently borrowed for, as well as any transfer of capital monies that we may do for small projects. Program component essentially has to do with all instructional costs related to the daily functions of the school district. That includes all teachers' salaries and benefits, and all associated costs for materials and supplies, equipment, special education, transportation expenses. Do you have any questions, Sopra? Okay, just a brief overview. Main question drivers to look for, our largest budgeted items are salary costs, which are negotiated with each unit. Like I say, most of our units are currently have active contracts. We have two contracts expiring this year. One is with the cafeteria workers, and the other is with our professional staff. Health insurance costs, which are also negotiated within each unit, is a main driver. Part of that has to do with the rates that are issued through New York State, which we actually have no control over, and retirement costs, which is another cost that we have no control over, both the teachers' retirement system and the employee retirement system. Additional higher costs that we have, again, BOC services, special education, expanding wellness programs that we have, security and technology, which in the last few years have been increasing at a rapid pace and will continue to do so over the next few years. In summary, the budget development process is one that begins in October and continues through April, when final adoption occurs by the Board of Education. The budget is a roadmap for the district to operate in the following year, and it's ever-changing based on the needs of the students and the programs. Our current status of the 2019-2020 budget, our unassigned fund balance is currently $2.5 million, and it's important to note that that $2.5 million is the 4% cap that New York State allows for, so we're at the cap, neither below or above it, but we are at the $2.5 million, which is the allowable rate. The total fund balance for the year ending 2019 did decrease by $329,000, and that was mostly due to the allocation of employees' retirement system reserve, which offset the expenses. For the year in 2020, overall spending is anticipated to be within budget, as by Lori Hasdani. And technology is one of our rising costs towards the end of this year. Recently, the New York State has come out with EDLAW 2D. The essential piece of that is to protect personally identifiable information... The essential piece of that is to protect personally identifiable information, PII. But that's something that we should be much more aware of going forward, as the expenses are going to increase towards the end of this year, as well as next year, with mandates coming down from New York State. And again, this is going to be another unfunded mandate. Small definitions. School budget is an expense-based budget that's developed around projected revenues and estimated expenses for the fiscal period from July 1st to June 30th of next year. And once again, expenses cannot exceed revenues. Just a little graphic to show, as our revenues are going down, expenditures are going up, and it's our task to try to balance that. Throughout the planning stage, expenditures are continuously reviewed and compared to prior year's actuals, and our revenues are essentially made up of the tax levy, which, as everyone knows by now, is capped by the tax law. I just wanted to note, everybody thinks there is a 2% tax cap. This year, the CPI has come down at a rate of 1.81. Newsday was kind enough to publicize that on the front page of the newspaper. 1.81 is not the tax cap. That is a piece of the tax cap formula. Just want to note that. State aid, the initial run is come out from Albany, and our initial projection is 4.75%, or roughly $590,000. But again, it's important to note, as Steve Stern mentioned as well, that's an ever-changing thing, and that number could go up or it could go down. It's unknown at this point. And fund balance, which is the allocation we're reserves. Fund balance. Our estimates will continue on a monthly basis, at this time, determine the level of funding for the year, and at that point, we try to appropriate how much money we're going to be putting towards next year's budget, and it's a goal and has been a continuing goal of the board and administration, to continue to reduce the fund balance allocation to the budget. And our next budget workshop will be on February 10th, at which time we will be going over the estimated tax cap, as well as the rollover budget. We'll initially be going to start with the rollover budget for the 2021 season and go forward from there, based on conversations and collaborative team. Thank you. Any may have any questions?
No questions or comments?
So with respect to you continuing to follow fund balance estimates on a monthly basis, have you, you know, of course, our goal is whatever is left, we get to put in reserves.
Anything really exceeding the 4% is what you should be placing into reserves.
Correct. Okay. And then with respect to spending, have we issued a spending freeze? Where are we at?
Yes, as of January 3rd, the business office placed a spending freeze at old building levels. There are exceptions for those things based on needs of the students, and there are certain departments, like buildings and grounds, that have not so much a freeze, but more leniency because of the needs at that level.
Thank you.
Sure.
Too much data for... Now, when you talked about the EDLAW 2D and the unmandated funds, do we have an idea of what percentage of our budget are these unmandated funds?
No, we don't, not at this time. The state is slowly coming out with mandates, but nothing has been really simply finalized. Mr. Tranquino will probably speak better to that, but there's no number in place on those mandates at this point.
I would just add, to further answer your question, Mrs. Weiss, that the mandates are clear, and the costs associated with them are what we need to determine. Mr. Tranquino has done a tremendous job at keeping the district well-informed and in compliance with everything involved in our cybersecurity, our data protection, and Gene has updated me and the administrative team regularly regarding these new regulations. However, he's also been charged with putting systems in place to make sure that we are both in compliance with EDLAW 2D and maintaining the security of our technological services. Gene just met with me yesterday to go over some of the associated expenses, and there are many different ways to address the mandate, and some of them will likely exceed what we can include in our budget. So Gene is prioritizing the musts, the wants, and the would-be-nices in the future. So we really will need to look backwards a bit and give him an allocation, which he will then best disseminate to make sure we're in compliance with 2D. Gene, do you want to add any good remarks?
I think that's it. The costs are twofold. There's security and there's privacy. Security is hardening our systems that we do, the physical security that you see around the district. And then there is the student privacy aspect and the overlap between the two, and that's what's struggling the most at this point.
Further answering your question, we'll receive no additional aid from the state to address this issue.
Right.
I would say that while the physical security of our district has been, by percentage, the fastest-growing area of our district budget, to becoming compliant with 2D and feeling safe and secure with all of our networked systems, by percentage, the allocations made towards cybersecurity will take over as the fastest-growing area of our budget, only to be competing with special education costs we want our control.
Well, we already have some of these security procedures in place. It's just a matter of going through, if I could better word, a checklist of the law and making sure that we're up to speed completely.
So the law has introduced a new level of standards that's far beyond what school districts generally have built their IT departments around, were built around providing teaching and learning, some edge technology to enable teaching and learning, with reasonable security measures that IT would responsibly take. They've taken that bar and raised it astronomically high with what's called the National Institute's Standards for Technology and Cybersecurity Framework, MISTCSF. And the cybersecurity framework dictates a completely different level of hardening hardware, software, and governance policies beyond what most school districts have originally have to do to re-missioning the IT department, and purposing us to spend a lot more time in an area which we may for what we would. We'd rather do the best we can, so to speak.
And I'll remind the board that Gene has enlisted some services for free through the Department of Homeland Securities to do an evaluation of our current systems, to define any weaknesses or vulnerabilities that we may have. So I can end in line, doing a full evaluation of what we do have, so we know where to target our necessary resources.
Thank you. Thank you, Gene. Thank you, Ray. Any more questions? So moving on to our next presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Dunkel. As I mentioned earlier, the curriculum team has worked very diligently to put together an update for the Board of Education regarding courses that will be available at John Glenn High School in our upcoming school year. And I would like to call upon our high school principal, Ms. Brzezinski, and our Director of Math Science and Technology, Ms. Irene Kelly Gorman, to take the board through the presentation and answer any questions that anyone has.
Good evening, Dr. Bossert, District Administration, and Professor of Board of Education. It is my pleasure to share with you some of the exciting program enhancements that we will be offering to the students of John Glenn High School for the 2021 school year and beyond. Tonight's presentation represents the collective effort of many members of the John Glenn High School and district leadership team, who have helped to provide the insight, leadership, and vision to continue to propel the academic program offered at John Glenn High School to the next level. So I would like to acknowledge, as Dr. Bossert mentioned, Dr. Hall, Ms. Fine, Ms. Kelly Gorman, Mr. Cole, Mr. McNamara, the Guidance Department, and especially Ms. Plina for their contributions to tonight's presentation. Tonight, on behalf of the team, Ms. Kelly Gorman and I will review the program and provide you with an overview of the timeline and steps taken to build a course guide offered for our students each year. We will also highlight the enhancements that we have made to the academic program at John Glenn High School over the past six years. Finally, we will conclude our presentation by sharing our vision for what lies ahead as it relates to future initiatives that we are in the process of pursuing. As you know, whenever we begin the planning process about what courses we're going to offer to our students, we always keep in mind that our students' needs and interests are at the forefront of our decision-making process. As indicated on this slide, ensuring that courses offered help our students to satisfy graduation requirements and align to proper subject sequencing is one of our number-one priorities. Additionally, we always use the district mission and built-in vision statements to guide our curricular decisions, to ensure that each student has the ability to reach his or her true potential as they prepare for their individual college and career paths. And we are consistently seeking to provide diverse course offerings across the disciplines that include the capstone level in each subject area to ensure rigor and equity across the board. To help highlight how this translates to the respective disciplines, I would like to call upon my colleague, Ms. Irene Kelly Gorman, who has been instrumental in helping to enhance the programs offered at John Glenn High School.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. In preparing for this presentation, we thought we should first take a look at the work that has been done over the past six years to diversify opportunities for all students at John Glenn High School. This work is a collaboration between students, teachers, and the administration. We are always looking to strike a balance between offering courses in areas of student interest, keeping our high school programs competitive, and finding balance between the disciplines. Courses noted under the Humanities tab there, such as pre-AP World History, are a reflection of conversations with our social studies teachers in the high school regarding how we can better prepare students for their first AP exam in 10th grade, or at least typically that is their first AP exam, as well as conversations with administrators in other districts to research how our neighboring school districts prepare their students for this exam. The pre-AP course introduces students to skills required to meet with success in the AP World History course they will then enroll in 10th grade. With the addition of the Seal of Bilinguality Diploma Designation, there was a need to expand our course offerings in the World Languages Department to support students looking to study multiple languages in high school. Each of the three courses identified on this slide, under the World Languages bubble, are offered at the commencement level and allow for students who are not enrolled in an AP language course to take the language in their senior year. And in regards to American Sign Language program, there actually is not an AP course offered for that, so this actually just makes the fourth-year sequence complete. The AP Capstone program has entered its third year at John Glenn, and we are looking forward to honoring more students with AP Capstone certificates and diplomas at graduation in June. Students who earn scores of three or higher in AP Seminar and on the AP Research paper will receive the AP Seminar and Research certificate. Students who earn scores of three or higher in both of those courses, as well as on four additional AP exams, and that can be of their choosing and in combination in different subject areas, will receive the AP Capstone diploma. The slide demonstrates five courses that we are currently offering for college credit through St. John's University and through Suffolk County Community College. Those courses would be College Accounting I, College Marketing, College Health and Wellness, Conversational Italian II, and Conversational Spanish II. And the next slide has an additional two courses that we were also able to partner with Suffolk. Their Beacon program is what the title is called. That would be College Production Systems and College Engineering. These courses are part of a dual enrollment program. They are ideal for a small school like John Glenn to add, because they provide opportunities for students to earn college credits while still in high school, but do not have to be scheduled as individual sections. They run concurrently. So for example, we may be offering a production systems course in the high school, and there may be 20 students enrolled. If only 10 of those students want to take it for college credit, we can put them all in one course still. So it doesn't put any extra strains on our master scheduling process, but it does open up further opportunity for those students who may want to study that field in college.
Is it the same exact classroom experience?
Yes. So basically, the process involves us submitting a course syllabus to the school that we will be partnering with. We also have to have not just our course approved, but our teachers approved, so we also have to submit their transcripts, their own personal resume, their experiences teaching that particular course, and both of those things have to be approved. And then, once approved, then students have the option to pay for the course for credit. Next year, we will add a third computer science class to our course catalog. Several years ago, it was students at John Glenn who requested that the district add computer science courses for them. Next year's graduating seniors will have the opportunity to take a three-year sequence in computer science courses at the high school. Mrs. Brzezinski is now going to take you through the process of building the course guide at the high school.
So it is clear that the team has done some heavy lifting over the past six years, and our students have undoubtedly been the benefactors. To accomplish this work, the team has engaged in a multi-year process that includes evaluating and supporting our current programs while preparing for the future. As the slide indicates, before a course is even offered in the current guide, conversations and planning usually take place three years prior to implementation. So before a course is placed in the 2021 Course Guide, the leadership team engages in dialogue and planning years in advance. For example, as you can see, during the 2018-2019 school year, the team met to review the current course offerings and evaluate the changes in the New York State requirements. We then engage in discussion of which new courses would enhance our current program. From there, we sought to identify the staff members that were certified and able to teach the new course, and then developed a plan to provide the identified staff member and or staff members with the professional development needed, so that they would be effectively prepared to teach the new course, such as pull out time for vertical articulation. This often includes consulting with Dr. Sepienza, Mrs. Valley, and the middle school staff. We also send our staff members to various trainings, engage in conferences, and prepare for curriculum writing if necessary. Then, as you can see, in the fall of 2019, time was allotted during department meetings to discuss the possible new courses with all department members, to make sure that we had a congruent mental model moving forward. Following the discussions, decisions were made about which new course proposals would be sent forward to building and district administration for review and approval. The administrative team then meets to approve and decide upon which courses we will add to the curriculum guide. From there, our teachers and counselors will begin promoting the new course offerings to our students. So this past January of the 2019-2020 school year, teachers now will make recommendations for their students about their next-level course study and post their recommendations to the portal. Our counselors also created a video on the scheduling process that our students viewed during homeroom. We also sent that video home via school messenger and posted it to the guidance website. The hope is that students and parents will begin to have conversations about which courses are appropriate for each student. After those conversations, our students will then submit their course requests to the guidance department, and to date, our counselors are already in the process of conducting meetings with each student to provide further guidance and to ensure that our students are selecting courses that are aligned with their individual pathways and goals for college and career. And finally, during the spring of 2020, the administrative team will meet to evaluate the student requests and create a master schedule that we believe will support the students' needs while balancing staffing, scheduling, and budgetary considerations. As mentioned, before we then finalize the planning process, we seek to provide the necessary professional development and curriculum writing to ensure that the courses that we put in the guide can actually come to fruition in 2021 school year. Our decision-making process is always anchored in our goal to offer courses and create schedules that best meet the needs of the diverse student body which we serve. To accomplish this, we consistently seek to balance course offerings across all content areas. We continue to build sequences to support the highest level of student achievement in each We continue to build sequences to support the highest level of student achievement in each discipline. We constantly evaluate our advanced placement program and seek to enhance our AP course offerings to ensure that our students can avail themselves of the most rigorous coursework so that they can have a competitive transcript when they apply to the college of their choice. As Ms. Kelly mentioned, we seek to expand our dual enrollment offerings so that students can take a college course while in high school, when possible. We also want to ensure that the new courses help our students to achieve the ever-growing various graduation pathways, that they address the social and emotional standards, and that they are aligned with the new and ever-changing content shifts. Lastly, we are always cognizant of the long-range preparation for courses that require multi-year coordination and conversation. So with all of this in mind, I would always like to thank the team for their hard work in ensuring that all of the above-mentioned objectives were considered when the 2021 Course Guide was being created. Ms. Kelly will now share with you some of the exciting enhancements that we have planned for the 2021 school year, as well as the subsequent school years as a result of this multi-year planning process. Thank you.
So next year, as you can see on this slide, we'll be adding four courses to the high school course guide. AP Calculus BC is a slightly more challenging course than the AP Calculus AP that we currently are offering. It adds an option for our high school seniors who are looking for a greater challenge in mathematics to have another course in their senior year. They will choose between AB or BC. They don't take both. AP Computer Science A will focus on teaching students the language of Java. The addition of the course creates, as I mentioned before, a three-year computer science sequence for our students, so next year's seniors will be our first cohort that will have that opportunity. The College Government and News Literacy course will run concurrently with our Politics and Government Senior Year course. This course will be offered as a dual enrollment option through Stony Brook University, and is a reflection of how the presentation by Dr. Howard Schneider during Stony Brook Superhead's Conference Day in the fall sparked interest from the staff to create new opportunities for our students at John Glenn. The course will teach students critical thinking skills necessary to judge the reliability and credibility of information, whether in print, on television, or on the internet. Lastly, our Physical Education Department, and I will not do this as well as Mr. Shanahan would, but they plan to add a Contemporary Topics in Physical Education course to provide students with choice in selecting their mandated physical education course while in high school. The class is going to be offered to students who require extra support in physical education as well as the general high school population, and topics they are planning to include are things such as project adventure, yoga, and mindfulness. Looking ahead to the future, here are a few courses that we are beginning to research. Cybersecurity is a fast-growing field, as we discussed earlier, to many, of employment, and we know students will have opportunities to study it in their post-secondary careers. We are currently investigating creating a course to expose students to some of this work while they are in high school. It would also offer our students a computer science course, aside from the two APs that we're currently offering. If they maybe in their senior year didn't want to take an additional AP, but still wanted something in the field of computer science, that they could then take. Many schools offer students electives, such as college writing and Level English 12 for seniors. This provides students with more choice in selecting courses tailored to their interests in their senior year of high school. Mrs. Fine and the English department will be reviewing these options in the near future. Overall, we're very excited about the 2020-2021 John Glenn High School course catalog and the opportunities it will provide for our students. Thanks.
Thank you. That was a really awesome presentation. Really, I appreciate all the work and the planning that goes into, especially what I think is, we're on great track of, that we've done before with the guidance and actually getting more contact time to students, the actual preparation to build the course guide and to really go forward and help students to really plan out, kind of have like a roadmap of what they think they're interested in and a guideline for going forward and help them to, you know, kind of channel those interests into that. So I think that's just incredible, and it's really going to help our students. I'm really proud of the work that you guys are doing and that, and probably a part of it. On that, I guess one of my questions, I have a couple. One of them was, as we talk about, you know, giving students opportunities, I wanted to know what's up opportunities in the area of online studies? I know we have some online courses, we have pamphlet, because are we looking to enhance those as we go more into like a digital age where a lot of people do take? Is there a window of opportunity? I know you may not have the answer for me tonight, but if you, you know, can just let me know if there's something that going forward, you may be able to offer students, because we are such a small school and really can't physically offer those kind of things. Is that within our realm to consider going forward?
One of the things that Senator Weiss on that topic, which we discuss frequently, is any coursework that's offered to a student has to be supervised by a certified teacher in that area. So even if a student would be engaged in an online environment, they would still have to be a faculty member assigned to that coursework with the proper certification to deliver.
And then we talked about these sequences for computer science. With those sequences, do they get any sort of certification, like a sort of computer literacy certification?
We don't have that planned, but that's something that we can certainly investigate and see if it's something that other districts are doing for their students. I know, just speaking with guidance counselors, the reason why I mentioned it as a sequence is that, you know, they'll speak to the fact that when students go to apply for schools, that's something that frequently they can speak to that in their interview or their essay-writing process. And it's also, some of the guidance counselors, and not just from our district, but from other districts, have shared that they find electives to be more successful in keeping up enrollment when there is a clearer sequence or a clear path for students, because then they can take an introductory course early on and see it through. So that's another reason why we always look for those opportunities and to present it to our students in that manner.
Absolutely, especially as they develop a passion in a certain area. It gives them opportunity to do that, as we've done with robotics and technology. You talked about, and I had attended the conference where you talked about the government and the news literacy, and it was an awesome presentation. And now we talked about doing dual enrollment. What would that class actually equate to? Is it a politics, is it a history class? Because it was a very kind of a broad spectrum, and you don't really know if it pigeonholes you to a certain type of class.
The way that Stony Brook has been offering it, in discussion with Mrs. Fine and Dr. Hullen though, is to do it within our senior year government course that students take. So like the other dual enrollment courses that we spoke about, students will have the option to take it for credit. They don't have to, but it will run within that course that we already have. They're looking at the curriculum and they're embedding it into the participation in government with the news literacy component into the course.
Okay, so then if you got a credit for it, it would just be under the AP government? It would be a separate course?
Right.
Okay, I got it. I'm sorry.
Not just AP, though. The regular government senior course that students take also. They will have the option to take it for college credit, not an AP.
For your qualification.
Right. So it's basically taking students who were in our participation in government course who didn't have the option to get a college credit, and now they have the ability to also get a college credit within that same course. And like I said earlier, it doesn't put an additional strain on our master schedule process because they run it.
So they would get a credit in government politics, data history, government in college?
Right.
Okay. I'm just trying to see what the Stony Brook equivalent course is that gets applied.
You'll notice in the course guide, instead of it being called Participation in Government, it's going to be called Government and News Literacy. So all students in that course will be exposed to the key pieces of that curriculum, and the students that choose to take it for college credit can opt to do so.
And I think that's the important point. This is why, while the curriculum will be modified to include this new content that the teachers are very excited about, students would have to opt to take the class for college credit, which of course comes with Stony Brook enrollment fees. So all the students in the class will experience the same curriculum, and some of the students may opt to do it for college credit through Stony Brook.
So just for clarity, for one more time, Participation in Government.
For clarity, Participation in Government will no longer show up in the course catalog. It will be listed as College Government and News Literacy. And you have the choice to either pay for or not pay for tuition to get a college credit.
This is what happens when the math director has to do social studies.
If you choose to take it for college credit, you're getting, the course is Government and News.
Yeah, I don't want to swear to what Stony Brook calls it, but you will get a transcript through Stony Brook that will have that accreditation.
And like every other dual enrollment course or AP course, it's up to the university or the college that the students end up taking of how the credits are received by that institution. Stony Brook awarding the credit in that particular department can only be obligated to Stony Brook. Other universities may do it differently when you try to transfer that credit into their college university.
So every child is required, just for the audience, right? Every child in 12th grade is required to take Participation in Government now to graduate, which will then convert into this new, so every child in the 12th grade will have an opportunity to take a college.
Again, well done, Mrs. Manolito.
Well, I appreciate you guys continuing to offer all these rigorous classes and making them super competitive. We're a small district, and I know that the master schedule is like a puzzle. That is, I can't even wrap my head around how you guys do it, but you continue every year to bring forward more and more rigorous opportunities for our children to be competitive with our neighboring districts and who stay through the country. And I really like the fact that you're giving them opportunities to come out with basically an entire semester plus worth of credits if they can apply, although they do not necessarily go into the math content area. It doesn't transfer like you were speaking. It satisfies tons of electives, even if it doesn't. So I appreciate all that. I had a question about the physical education class. Is that the same one that we spoke about last year?
No, that was a health class that was introduced. This is really designed for your student who is not necessarily your athlete. That one would take a different kind of physical education course. And as Ms. Kelly mentioned, it's going to include things like project adventure, yoga, mindfulness, and we're going to continue to develop the curriculum, perhaps in region, curriculum right up into the summer. But it's for your non-traditional athletic student and for others that may want to take that as well.
So it fulfills your PE requirement, and you don't have to take traditional gym class. You can choose this instead. And is it going to be, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, is it going to be offered as often as the PE classes in conjunction with, or just wherever you guys can kind of fit in?
We're still fleshing all of those logistics out, and we're still in that planning process, but we're advertising it, and we'll basically make those decisions based on the student request.
I have a question on the dual enrollment, since we seem to be talking about it tonight. Do we ever have an opportunity, or investigate opportunities, to send our students out to the community college or university-level campus for a class that would be in conjunction with high school versus just certifying our programs here for dual enrollment? Do we ever send a child out to take the class?
I know that Suffolk offers a program like that. I think I'm sure it's supposed to. It's something that I find many of our students would feel that they lost opportunities in high school because we're not that close to the campus. So there is that time of travel, and then they lose opportunities to take other coursework in high school. So it's not something that I particularly have looked into. I know it is a program. It's something we could investigate, but...
And over the last year, Ms. Brzezinski and I have conversations about specific students who are experiencing specific challenges in attendance at John Glenn High School who gain the high school credit necessary for graduation by attending programs at the community. Any other questions from the board of education? Thank you, Ms. Kelly Forman. Thank you, Ms. Brzezinski. Excellent job filling in the blanks for those unable to attend. We really appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation. I will tell Mr. Shanahan, hopefully, you spoke about the physical education.
Ms. Weiss, can you please accept the donations?
Yes, absolutely. We have one donation, and that is from the John Glenn High School PTSA. They have generously donated the following items to the high school: a nine-foot Christmas tree, which I believe goes into the foyer, we call it. Two menorahs, or two, okay, that's what I have, two menorahs, and assorted holiday decorations for a value of $300. And that's it. And we thank them. I know they have a, they put on a great holiday, Children's Holiday Program. We do a lot of work with the high school around the holiday season to provide our students in the community, the children in the community, a lot of opportunities for getting, listening with our high school students and enjoying the holidays. So I thank you guys.
Can I have a motion to accept the donations? Mrs. Manolito, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor? Four, zero. Thank you. John Glenn PTSA. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda vote? Can I have a second? Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Mrs. Manolito. I know that Mrs. Dunkel would like to make a comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, as part of the financials, that for the second time in recent months, that the business offices had no findings in their things order report. That's largely attributed to the hard work of my staff. And specifically, I just wanted to point out that much of that work is done by Rose Seider, our district treasurer, who happens to be sitting here tonight and supporting me. So I wanted to thank her for being here.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Rose. Thank you, Lorraine. I have a motion to accept the consent. Oh, we already did that. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Four, zero. Thank you.
We are up to the second resident's remarks. Since we've had residents come in, I am going to reread the board. "The Board encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves in any organization that they represent at the meeting. Comments related to district business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which their reputations, privacy, or right to due process could be in some way violated is prohibited." Do we have any resident's remarks?
Hello? Hi, my name is Agatha Bell. I'm representing myself. I just wanted, I made a point to get here. I'll be late. Because I saw on the, I saw the slides, and I wanted to publicly thank the leadership at the high school for all their amazing work. I know a lot of parents, we've been discussing, were very excited about the addition of the BC Calc and the other, you know, the Computer Science AP class. And we're excited, we're happy. We thank Mrs. Brzezinski and her staff, and all the staff that went into getting that accomplished. So I just wanted to publicly say, me and a lot of other parents have spoken to her, very excited and happy that the district is doing that. And this is all good steps, and the high school's oriented in the right way. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment on that, but, you know, I appreciate it too, knowing how young our children. But, you know, I do, I appreciate it too, knowing how much younger children, but I appreciate that we take a lot of effort in this district, though we're a small district, to be very competitive with the course offerings compared to larger districts. So that we really don't feel a loss for our students based on the size of our school. We really give them an equal opportunity, you know, to succeed in a lot of those course offerings that are really competitive for them. So I appreciate that too.
Hi, Ms. Brzezinski. The other day, I quickly read the Goldie Hawn Foundation. Can somebody just share information about that, like which grades?
Oh, goodness. Dr. Hull can answer that question. If you look back at one of the video archives that was done in the fall, Dr. Hull actually gave a very thorough and comprehensive presentation to the board and the community about that section of the mindfulness program that we're engaging in. And I don't want to give you incorrect information, but this is precisely the reason why we archive our presentations on the website. So if you look at the agendas for the meeting, you'll see the discussion of the mindfulness curriculum. And then the video of Dr. Hull's presentation will answer all your questions about the program. I'm sorry.
And the item on the agenda tonight is basically the support for the mindfulness program that we approved back in the fall.
Well, obviously, that was, the dates were...
Yes, yes. So it's like one was approved prior. This is now basically implementation. But you can see the program explained in that. Any other resident's remarks? Once? Twice? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Manolito, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor? Four zero. Thank you for coming up. Thank you for your presentations.